We are, we're ready. That thumbs up? Welcome everyone to State Council for the President's Meeting. Start with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to your mother which is standing one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Franklin Delano is not here this evening. Nick Fong, here. Here another.
Here.
Joseph Coles.
Here.
Paul Farthing here, Ben Webb.
Here.
Tim Madrell.
I'm here.
Harvey Dis.
Here.
Allison Speer.
Here.
Joe Zadlo.
Here.
Okay. This evening we have a session where we discuss some real estate matters, potential litigation, and now I'll open it up to a public comment. Cindy.
Okay, so Cindy, I'm gonna go with this. Quick question for you because I turned down it today. How come the Creek Road, like off of Germantown Pike?
Creek Road.
Creek Road, not to be confused with.
Uh huh. It's bad.
They almost swallowed up my SUV.
It's bad.
And it's only like that one small section, is that not Skipback Township?
Uh huh, it's Lower Province Township. And Bill's been calling it Lower Province, like are you guys gonna fix your road because it's bad? Skipback actually gave that section of road through the park back to the state. And so from about 200 feet in off of Germantown Pike,
Yeah.
it converts, it averts back to the state park property.
Oh really?
But that first 200 feet is Lower Province and it's bad. I was a few days ago myself, I'm like what on earth?
I stopped driving on it, you're in there.
You can't, you can't avoid it. Well, I didn't want to sit in traffic, so I don't know. Unless you get a fellow that's off road.
I will, I will tell Bill that we had residents complaining and maybe he'll circle back more with the Public Works Director over at LP.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Otherwise, I hope you guys have a wonderful holiday. Thank you. The week over just for.
Any other comments? Go ahead.
Hey, how are you all? Thank you, Paul. So, one of the ones that I don't set two that I'm looking into here. Let's go to the first one that looks similar. Crosswalks on Mill Road and Carden Drive and Heckler. Tim, I'd like you to address you on that one if I could. And if you could explain what the job is going to look like and the plan that you're working towards and how that connects and.
If I promise to let you ask any questions before we get there, can we put it, can we do it on the agenda? It's on the agenda.
Fill the agenda.
I promise you we'll, yeah, no questions. Yep.
And the same thing about the, about the setting.
Okay, excellent.
Cool?
Yep.
Thank you, Paul.
Yeah, not a problem. All right, let's pay some bills here. We have a motion for approval of November 15, 2020. Come in, commission.
Second.
Motion is there, all in favor?
Aye.
Do we have any correspondence?
No, we do not.
Excellent, thank you, Alice. And let's see here, do I have a motion to approve the Treasury report as of November 30th, 2022?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion is there, all in favor? All right, paying the bill, enter bill paid November 28th. General fund the amount ninety-two thousand, one eighty-one fifty-four cents. The sewer fund for sixty-one thousand, five hundred eighty-four and eighty-five cents. Parks and open space for four thousand, five hundred twenty-six dollars and twenty cents. As well as bills for payment, December 14th, the general fund of ninety-one thousand, eight hundred one dollars and seventeen cents. Sewer fund of one hundred three thousand, sixty-three dollars and thirty-one cents. And the parks and open space for three thousand, seven hundred fifteen dollars and ninety-eight cents. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right, here we go. Thank you, I appreciate it. Tim, go. Get some details.
Yeah, I've got a number of things on my agenda and then just on the show.
Just skip the first two.
Okay. Um, yeah, so, um, just like to start early this year is considering road work for next year. Um, recalling of this year, we paved Evansburg Road and Collegeville Road, fixed some things up. Um, Rosewood Circle. But the, Billy has looked into roads that came up with four roads he'd like to consider for 2023 improvement project. Black Road kind of off of Miller down by the Met and a Church off of Evansburg. Locker being added here, which is the Lockwood Estate subdivision. Miller Road, just the loop that comes off of Collegeville. And then Anita Drive. So those are the ones that Billy has proposed. And I think all I'm asking tonight is for the board, you know, during your travels or during conversations, are there any other roads that are other concern? You know, anything that we should fix? Other than Skipback or Creek Road off of Germantown Pike. So if there's anything that we've missed or that Billy has missed in his travels, we'd like to, you know, start looking at those and then authorize going after the bid for road improvement projects, you know, February of, of next year.
Any questions about that?
Just honestly, Castle Road between Mill and Landis, there's a dip. It's, it's if you're coming from Mill heading toward Landis on the right-hand side, the second entrance into Castle Road, then to Castle Mill, there's, there's a dip and you do pretty much bottom out.
We'll take a look, that's exactly.
Maybe go slow, I would say.
Maybe it's a speed hop and then.
First, maybe a speed hop, as a matter of fact.
And other questions on this?
On that, well, Tim just mentioned speed hops. I think there's certain points that, you know, really could look at around the township that we could have temporary speed hops for some traffic, traffic mitigations. And we could just go sober coffee. Some, just temporary ones that we could, that we could use for some of our different roads. I know there's been a lot of neighbors in the neighborhoods that have asked for something like this. I know we don't like to put in permanent ones, it's not good for the road crews, it's a pain. And Tim has said that that might be something we could use as traffic mitigation measures in some places that we can say maybe speed's a little excessive. Would say Rosewood and all my neighbors that could get them and other neighborhoods. It says speed's been really bad. I was not hit by an Amazon driver backing up the other night. I've got out of clock and they're going fifty, sixty them though. I mean, it gets bad. They think it's a raceway. So, you know, there's little kids now and I've seen them.
It's something to consider.
Amazon is gonna be the bane of all residences. I mean, between speeding or the double, triple parking, blocking, your ability to get through. Tim, what do you know about temporary speed hops? I hadn't seen that.
Yeah, you know, like the city of Philadelphia is using it a lot. And, and so they are, they, you know, they, they are not made out of asphalt as you think of speed on, but they are like a plastic product, basically some kind of, you know, polymer.
An ultimate place.
Just like.
So you do a little destruction to your.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
But, but certainly, what, what Philadelphia has done is they come in two sections and in theory they, the wheelbase of an emergency service vehicle can straddle them, but a passenger car cannot. And so it's, you know, it's, it's an interesting thing.
Amazon can be the same, Amazon can straddle, Amazon can.
So, but we'll think about it, but certainly the, you know, there, there are, the, the whole concept of that traffic calming has generated an industry where people are producing products that may be more attractive to others and, you know, that mean old, asphalt, permanent speed hop kind of destruction. So it's something to look into for sure.
Maybe less Amazon than actual new traffic. I mean, like, look, I was a kid once, but like, there's a lot of cars like at night just flying out there. You got DoorDash, she got, all these other services and, and our neighbors as well. So they were concerned. I think maybe we put like two or three, it's like my pool, right? I have a pool cover. And they have a, Tim, would they be like those little things that you hunker down into the cement?
Yeah, I, I don't know the details, but I just know that they are, you know, they're fixed to the ground in some fashion that, you know, maybe there is actually a bolt, maybe and there's a sleeve because of the ground and you bolt it in and unbolt it. I, I, I'd like to look into it for sure.
So would that be something you can ask TPS to give us some?
Yeah.
That's our chart, right?
Yeah. I had a call with Chris Licken Friday, so I, I'll bring that up with him.
Also, a, a measure for, for a bus stop, there's a lot of parents down at the end, I mean, a lot. And you, you all have, they, we all have big cars now. There's a lot of SUVs down there and they're parked on all other sides of the road, like it's South Hill. And if you try to get in and weave through and then the Amazon truck, there's just a lot of little tiny traffic mitigation measures that as a result of the way roads look is now, that I think we could address that might make it a little easier. Cause there's a lot of like big SUVs sitting in there this far apart and then you gotta weave in and out all the way up past the first house.
Amazing how a little common sense people are, right? Yeah, see, we, we did, which was including things like, I know in the past whenever we wanted to do some of these things, it required a traffic plan of putting strip out, checking the traffic, seeing how many vehicles, how fast. Two or three were tied to these kinds of things.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, okay.
I have a line on that, like the developments too, when you're planning like, you know, bus stops at the beginning of the development, you know, you have all these parents parking, they're not like, and we're, we're narrowing the roads because we don't want the water to run through it. We're not, I also, we're giving ourselves a bit of a grip for some places. And I think that's, you know, because of the water runoff, we're, we're so concerned about that issue that we're trying to keep the roads so narrow. And when, and then when you get snow pile up there, it's even worse, like it's so.
I'll give you, I think kind of give you a little bit from this, but it's, that's okay. Rest assured, before any of those circles are ever approved in common times, the fire company has to tell you that they can turn their tanker truck around in there, which is the biggest thing that we'll ever see. So people being, you know, ridiculous about where they're parking their cars and no parking and blocking things down, so that's.
Technically, they can't turn their tanker truck around to that one because there was a mitigation method put in there so that the truck can come in the other side, so they could go all the way out the other side. I don't think a tanker truck can get through where there's Belgium blocks are, you know, getting rid of the triple, that's just.
Okay, okay, thanks.
That's why you guys put that, that emergency access up there and for city, it could fit for the length and the size of those lines.
All right, Tim, anything else about the road improvement?
No.
Thanks. And same with Landers, a list to drive some. The next time you had.
So crosswalks, and, and this has kind of been on my list a little bit. Recall with the Barcelamon homes you built at the end of, of Rosewood Circle, there is a pedestrian path that goes out to Mill Road, up to Carriedee and stops. And if you look at the handicap ramps that are receiving that crosswalk on Carriedee, they're really old and in really bad shape. I would like to explore, you know, a more formal crosswalk at that location. It would be an upgrade to handicap ramps to be modern, some modern standard. I think it's just some signs and some paint.
You know, Tim, I, I will interject a little bit. Was that, that was classified as an emergency exit and not classified as an pedestrian path?
It was both. So the path is actually built on, on Mill Road. The, the path comes up, goes between the back of the house, comes out to Mill Road and stops right at Carriedee.
I have a picture you can see.
Yes.
I know it will come.
Okay.
So here's the thing now, like we have had this conversation about making that part of the trail system. As nobody in the, in the development pretty much wants that to be part of the trail system in there. Because first off, we have people coming through there on dirt bikes. They don't care whether or not that's a, whether or not that's for handicap accessible or coming off the side where the safety chain is. As well as, you see no reason for traffic to come through more stuff that comes in there with them already there, especially with the issues we've been having with, with speed and the amount of volume that's coming through Rosewood several. So, and there was other measures that we're trying to go through that I know you spoke to, you spoke to Greg, my neighbor with about going through there behind the trees as well. And that would have connected those two areas. And when we last spoke and corresponded, you might said that there will be no trail going through part of the trail system of Rosewood Circle. That has now changed in your mind?
This, this is a crosswalk we're proposing here. You're, you're putting a crosswalk on Mill Road where there existed one, you're trying to improve it because it's the old washed out.
Correct.
Concrete sunk, it's a tripping hazard. You're not fixing that, right?
Correct.
I was gonna say, I have a picture if you want to see it, that's what it's on, a crosswalk.
Yeah, but if it's, if it's, if the walk is going across to.
Iron Bridge.
It's, it's already there though, I mean, it exists. It's just in poor, it's in poor condition, it's, it's not safe.
But it's connecting to Rosewood Circle, you're saying?
Correct. It's already connected.
Okay. So what I'm saying is, is that we're making that part of the trail. I don't think that we should be making this part of the trail.
Yeah, no, I, I would, I think it is part of the sidewalk system, you know, where everyone is trying to encourage, you know, pedestrian connections. And the sidewalk system and Iron Bridge would connect to the sidewalk system on Rosewood Circle and just become part of, you know, the Skipback sidewalk network.
Well, pedestrian sidewalk network also needs to be have people protective because the speed around here.
Yeah, that's exactly why, that's exactly why I think we need to upgrade that crossing of Mill Road.
Not marked. The, the curb is recessed but sinking. So what do you need from us to move forward? So you, you need anything other than?
So we need, you know, we need PennDOT permit to review those, those ramps and to make official crossing. So we would, we would pursue that. And in a similar fashion, one of the things that's always bothered me is as we come down Mount Airy Road to Heckler, we come around Heckler, that trail comes all the way down to a cross from attached building driveway. But there's no connection from that terminal into that trail to Palmer Park Trail.
That's a second, I know.
Yeah, and so I'm, I'm thinking that it makes sense to find a, a safe crossing location from that Heckler Road system and tie that into the walking trail around Palmer Park. That lets all like the townhomes and Monroe Court and single family homes down on Mount Airy, you know, direct pedestrian access to Palmer.
Got you. Can you just have her anything, just so you can go get?
No, just authorize me to go get, take a look at that.
Yep, yep. See, that's been taken.
What is the proposed like idea? Is it like paintings on the roads like for safety issues?
Yeah, it's, it would be a sign, you know, pedestrian crossing ahead and then, you know, a standard crosswalk, stricling pattern, yes.
Okay. What, what is the statistics on these crosswalks? Cause I know we have several, you know, 113 of, um, probably like different roads, like has there been any, the village, like I know there was an accident there, the village, like has there been incidents of these crosswalks? Cause I like.
Again, it's just trying to improve the circulation network, improve the safety of people crossing. People are crossing at these locations today.
Right.
Absent, you know, the official signage and, and, and stricting. And so again, just, just trying to make that a better connection.
I mean, there's also some things that are all in the same vein of public safety. Is there, I know, I, I just threw, I had dental people talking, you know, talk to some people from Skipback Village, you know, business owners talking about issues with the, with the traffic and people not being able to cross and, you know, safe. This goes along with this in safety. Or I think there are some points downtown, and I know we're all not in charge of downtown, that is the state road, but like Collegeville Road, for example, making a left out of Collegeville Road, there should be a restriction there between like seven o'clock and nine o'clock in the morning. And also at like five o'clock to seven o'clock, there should also be another traffic mitigation measure over towards Store Road when you're coming out of there by the comic book store because that is a complete and utter mess with people trying to cross, especially with many high traffic restaurants, right there in the Bellini, you know, Time Out.
I guess I should let you talk to an open comment because this is not part of the agenda, right? Like, it's not something agenda, we'll talk about that, there's many questions about that. If you want to have a conversation about other things, we're happy to listen to that. I apologize, I didn't really just have that very open comment. But this goes in line with, we agree. This goes along with everything you're saying. Where we see something that can be improved about safety, we're gonna do it. Will someone still speed? Yes. Will somebody still get hit by bicycles and looking like cross? Sadly, yes. But everything we do is one step more for safety, visibility. We're gonna mark it, it's gonna be safer. And so we're continuing to march toward that. Whether it's potholes or unsafe intersections, call the township shooting all over, whatever. Allison, take that down, you know, a lot of road crew look down, come and look down and see what we can do, what we can do.
Well, I also have some ideas also that I'd like to talk to you personally about maybe Nick, about passive, passive, um, traffic mitigation. Cause a lot of studies have been done, let's say certain times of the day, I'm talking downtown, not on my street. But, um, you know, speed traps weren't affected. So what was effective was putting an officer either in the middle of the road or in plain sight. Therefore, in those areas where it's permitted, that officer would be able there as an active passive, would be a passive mitigation measure for traffic and people would slow down at those high peak times of day. Also, try to talk to Mr. Muckel about maybe closing off that area for our events when we do have events like Petersville does on certain stretches.
Do we know, and we're, we're happy to talk anytime about this.
All right.
We'll move through.
Yeah.
Move through the agenda.
Next on my agenda, just a, a word of note, Lower Province Township has updated their comprehensive plan. And in so doing, they distribute that comprehensive plan to the adjacent municipalities. So the Lower Province Township Comprehensive Plan is here at the township building. If anyone wants to look through it, read it, understand what they're talking about doing. As I've looked through it, the vast majority of changes they're seeking to make are down more toward Trooper and Lake Grove in that section of Lower Province. They are looking to try and improve Ridge Pike through Lower Province. One of, there's a huge section about the need to improve pedestrian connections. And, you know, many towns are really struggling to achieve some of the connections that we have. That's a key feature of, of the Lower Province Comprehensive Plan. One of the interesting things that is occurring is PennDOT's working with the township, working with the county in the reconfiguration of the intersection of Ridge Pike and Germantown Pike by specs. It's going to be a new roundabout, new configuration of River Road, add a new connection down to Penshensville Road, but it's a pretty expensive improvement of that intersection, hoping to mitigate some of the traffic over the Powell Road Bridge, I think at the same time. So that's kind of a very, very interesting thing. Again, those documents here at the township building, if anybody wants to read them, I think Lower Province is receiving comments from, from those adjacent municipalities. It's here.
So what intersection will they store for about two years?
Oh my god.
And then they go back.
Yeah.
Can I just have one comment on that?
Sure.
Debbie Keeps, Skipback Township. I, I, this brings a question to mind. When had how often did Skipback update their comprehensive plan?
Joe, our last update was a while. Yeah, probably 2012, 14, something like that. It's about a 10-year cycle is, is the theory.
Okay, so pretty soon.
Yeah, so pretty soon, we should be looking at that again ourselves, yes.
Now, have you been in formal contact, sorry, sorry.
No, I'm good, I'm good, thanks.
Have you been in formal contact in some kind of consortium with Lower Province to adopt the plan? Or have you just been kind of barely speaking with their supervisors or engineers?
So, um, I am the Lower Province Township engineer as well. So I've been sitting in on many of those meetings and, and conversations. So I have a little, you know, knowledge of what they've been discussing. And again, I think it is, again, just kind of setting goals. It's a goal-setting document, as, as all of our comprehensive plans are. And, and looking at a bit of history, a bit of the development patterns that have existed. One of the things that you notice going through Ridge Pike especially, whether it's, you know, Plymouth Township or Norristown or Eastmark, as you come through Ridge Pike, you know, it, it's been developed in the sixties, it's a lot of driveways, it's a lot of old strip centers, a lot of properties that are ordering on to bike it. And, you know, adaptive reuse of those properties is one of the big topics in their comprehensive plan. What can we do to re-energize, you know, some of those tired downtown areas? And so that's a, a big component of, of their doctrine.
And keep them commercial for people to, to shop, right?
Yeah.
Because I, it would be, it would be a shame to put, to, to rezone a lot of those areas from a commercial and, and make them into some kind of residential with a giant hour rise for the floor floors, you know? It'd be a shame because we have too many of those ugly aisles we've got around here.
That's it. So next on my agenda is the park. Allison and I met with a, a guy who lays out disc golf courses. And I think the park board is kind of in support of, of that concept for that use, that landy. It's a very benign use. Allison and I walked with the guy who's kind of laying a theoretical design out. Doesn't like to pick any trees down, they become hazards. There is some underbrush that would be removed. The course is lined with avoid kind of some of the more public use spaces, but would kind of climb the top of the hill, go down, you know, some of the walking paths and areas up on top. And it looks like it's a really neat idea for landy as another way to use that, that beautiful open space. The construction is really not that difficult according to, which I heard about.
You don't think it's crazy?
A little area for, for what they call T-box. And then there's just a sleeve of the ground that holds the, the terminal basket. So it's not a lot of disturbance at all, you know, no disruption of natural environment. And I think that, wow, that's, that might be a pretty good idea. And so if the board were in favor, then if you could direct Allison and I to follow up with him. What was his name, Allison?
Sean.
Sean was a funny name, Sean Lovebetter or something.
Something. I can't recall his last name. The first name Sean.
Sean, Sean.
And he actually helped design Green Lane, Green Lane has a.
The county, the county just works up at Green Lane Park.
Yeah, I'd be interested to see like course layout, what the cost would be and what ongoing maintenance might look like.
Yeah.
After the initial brush clearing, how awkward the road would have to go there and keep the brush down or is it naturally occur because of the canopy or, but it's just some of that kind of stuff, so we don't worry getting into the short, medium long.
So if the concept sounds good, then Allison will go back and get some going permission.
You guys do want to follow up on that?
Yes.
Yep, okay. You have to go on that, right? You just sent your, all right? What else you got?
Just an update. So the Skipback Township zoning map has not been updated for a very long time. And it did not show some of the new roads that were built. Didn't show Meadowland, for example. Didn't show Rosewood Circle extension for sure. And, and a lot of those, you know, developments that have occurred in the last almost 15 years now, I think since the map was last updated. So my office just updated the background information on that zoning map. We brightened some of the colors. No changes to zoning districts, no changes to lines, no changes to township zoning, but just updated that map. And I think that at this point, we would now update the township website, removing that old map, inserting the new map and, and start selling and distributing that zoning map as, as part of our township documents.
Thanks, I'll get. Hey, Tim? So, Sir Barry, you have anything for us? Mr. Coles, you have anything for us?
Nothing, Mr. Paul.
All right. And, Mr. Zadlo, you have anything for us?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay. Now we're back to you, Alice, what do you got?
Okay. So first, I'm asking for authorization to go ahead and, uh, advertise our next year Board of Supervisors meetings for the year 2023. So I want to get that taken care of. Second, we have a special event permit. It's for the Orphans Disease Center. It's a bike ride. They do this every year in December. The actual event takes place in June. The actual event takes place in June. So I need, uh, you know, the okay authorization to go ahead with that special event.
They give you insurance?
Yes, they, they provide everything.
Hey, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Keep going, I have a friend.
So then I have, uh, a resolution 2022 dash 29. And this is for the review and the adoption of the 2023 budget. And resolution 22, 2022 dash 30. And this is to designate myself as a signer of a traffic signal maintenance program involving PNDOT, and it's a grant in which, uh, we're going to apply for some grant money to help to, uh, bring some of our traffic signals up to date, make sure everything's working well. It's not about that, okay? Mm-hmm.
Hold on, I just need a couple of... All right, so first, we have to vote on all these, I guess?
Yes.
Do I have a motion? You authorize and advertise the board supervisor meeting for the, for 2023? How many, motion?
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor? All right. Um, but just for reference, it's the same second Wednesday of the month, 7:30, same as always has been. The January meeting has to be done the first business day by law, so it's gonna be Tuesday this year because Monday is New Year's observance, right?
Tuesday, what day?
The third.
Derek, do you...
I'll make a motion for this special event permit for the Orphans Disease Center, main dog bike ride, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion is second, all in favor? Aye. Uh, do I have a motion for, let, resolution 2022 dash 29 to adopt the 2023 budget? I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor? Aye. And I'll make the motion to approve resolution 2022 dash 30 to designate Alice to give us all that grant money from that's where you park transportation, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor? Aye. I see nothing under old business.
Other, I found the guy's name, Sean Overturf.
That's it.
I love that, Overturf, that was close. I knew it was an interesting name.
Yeah.
Especially for guys that just golf.
Right, exactly.
Is that an old business and new business?
Yes.
With that, we'll adjourn the meeting, thank you all. Have a happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
See you in January.